Good evening, Council. I want to thank you all for this opportunity tonight. We don't get to brag all the time on some of the stuff we do in recreation. And I appreciate the time tonight so we can brag on the young people because they had a really good summer. So, I'm going to start out with Dixie Miners team from Lamar. So when I call your name, if you would step forward just right up here. Okay? There may be some autographing involved later. So, you just be ready. Coaches Alex Weatherly, Jason Olson, Aaron Weaver. Players Dawson Wilks, Tucker Watford, A.J. Odom, Mr. Zaden Patrick, Mr. DQ Green, Mr. Austin Barr, LT Weatherly, Avery Weaver, Landon Olson, Colt Daniel, Mr. Brody Hickson, Mr. LaBarre Lucas. I'm going to brag on you for a second. It won't take long. This year was the first year that Dixie Youth Baseball did Division Two, which is for smaller areas. Lamar fell into that. This is the first ever state champion in Dixie Youth Division Two Baseball for minors. They won the state, they went to the World Series, ended up finishing third there. So, they did a really good job this summer. I know a lot of them have been complaining a little bit from what I hear about all these personal appearances they're having. They're all famous now, they can't even go out to eat no more. And also in this group, Mr. A.J. Odom was the batting champion for the entire tournament. He was five-for-eight, hit 625, I believe is what it was, for the tournament. So, great job, guys. Appreciate you. Appreciate you coaches. Appreciate board members that are here. They did an excellent job this summer. All right, we're going in age order. So, next up will be the girls. Let's see who's here. First, the coaches, Mr. Richard Brignan, Charlie Holloway, and Tony Doherty. Players, Ms. Leah Catherine Brignan, Ms. Kansas Cassidy, Ms. Kendon Dawson, Ms. Madison Doherty, Ms. Avery Easters, Ms. Chelsea Golwings, Ms. Kaylee Holloway, Ms. Kiana Jacobs, Harley Lyles, Arianna McPhail, Ms. Emily Sivela, Ms. Brianna Smith, Ms. Caden Thompson, Ms. Jordan Weaver. This group won the state championship for junior girls division in Little League. Now, you've got two different organizations here. You've got Dixie Youth over here. This is a Little League team. Whereas this was a Lamar team, Lamar area team. This is a true Darlington County team right here, these next two teams are. We have players on this team from Harshville, Lamar, and Darlington. They won the state championship. They beat Florence to get to the Southeastern Regional, where they went to Salisbury, North Carolina, to represent the state of South Carolina and Darlington County. Ages is fourteen, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, thirteen, fourteen for this group. But that's the juniors division in Little League. And they went up there and represented the state of South Carolina and Darlington County well. So, thank you very much, ladies, for being here tonight. Next up will be our senior division in baseball. Again, Little League team from Darlington County, and most of the players are Darlington and Lamar. I'll call your name, come forward, Coach Trey Hall. Mr. Trent Avan, Mr. H. Chapman, Corion Davis, Pierce Evans, Mr. Huntley Hall, Mr. Austin Hill, Chuck Keith, Mr. Cameron Ruar, Mr. Rich Samuel, Richard Samuel, Mr. Shamar Sims, Eli Steele, Chase Watts, Mr. Kendall Wood, Mr. This group here is our fifteen, sixteen-year-old group. Like I said, they're from all over the county, mainly Darlington or Lamar. They won the state at Ermo, beat Ermo to win the state, went to the Southeastern Regional, was one game away from going to the World Series. They lost to Florida down there at the Southeastern, up there at the Southeastern Regional. They actually had to go to Virginia to play in the Southeastern Regional. But they were one game away from going to the World Series in Little League. So, guys, we appreciate you. Did a great job this summer. Let's give a round of applause. And on that note, you do not have to stay if you don't want to stay.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait, wait, wait. I just want to say it's good to see kids taking part in recreation. Instead of video games, getting out, going to sunshine, getting a break there. It's an awesome experience for kids that's participated and brought to this level in Darlington County. If everybody practices hard as Dawson does, it'd all be great because he's in the yard practicing all the time. You see him in that ball and glove. He was seeing with the bat. But congratulations to every one of you. Next year, just bring it home to us. But good luck in the future.
Thank you all. of Counties, County officials. And that would be Mr. Louis Graham, Mr. David Coker, Mr. Jonas Thomas, and Mr. Marion Stewart. Let's do a picture. Come on, come on. Somebody get over here on this side. Can you get us all in there?
Yes, okay. So, look this way first, and then that way.
Now, let's move forward to our public hearing. One A, lease number one, a five-year lease for tract of farmland consisting of 109.6 acres in the interior of the runway system inside the triangle of the runway at Darlington County Airport. Three thirteen G Graham Siggers Parkway, Darlington, South Carolina. Page ten. Anyone wish to speak on this public hearing? If not, I declare a public hearing one A closed. And lease number two, a five-year lease for tract of farmland consisting of 145 acres and around the bi-parcels around the exterior runway system outside the triangle of the runway, runway at Darlington County Airport, three thirteen G Graham Siggers Parkway, Darlington, South Carolina. Anyone wish to speak on this lease two A? Would not declare lease two A closed. Public hearing one B, ordinance number nineteen dash nineteen, an ordinance authorizing and establishing a group to grant special property tax assistance to certain rehabilitated historic properties in Bailey Bill program and other matters related thereto, second reading, carryover Anyone?
You'll have to go back to public hearing with the full text version.
Go ahead, read. One C, ordinance number nineteen dash twenty, an ordinance to amend ordinance number nineteen dash oh seven, Darlington County FY nineteen twenty budget ordinance for supplemental appropriations to the airport fund to receive expanded federal aviation administration grant funds for the airport five twenty three rehabilitation project and establish effective date of this Invitation and pledge of allegiance, Mr. Douglas, you do the invitation. Mr. Thomas, you do the prayer and pledge.
Our Father, which art in heaven, is holy and everlasting, Father. Father, we want to all want to thank you, Lord, for last night's rest and the fame, the touch, and welcome, and love this morning. And Father, God, we just want to thank you, Lord, for starting a new day in closing our right mouth. And Father, we asking you, dear Lord, the goodness of God. We ask your blessing for each and every one that has a tent, Lord. And Father, we ask the best for the one that could have tent and did not tent. And Father, God, we asking you, dear Lord, the goats, foreign countries, touch our boys, girls, men, women. Give them the foresight of coming home one day. And Father, God, we asking you, dear Lord, to lead us and guide us through this meeting in your name sake. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City comments, we said we have none. And corporal appearances, we have none. We'll move over to the sent agenda. Receive information. Planning Commission Comprehensive Plan Workshop, Tuesday, September seventeenth, twenty nineteen, four p.m. to five thirty p.m. at the elected election voter registration office, number thirty-one, Cassius Street, draw. Six B, Planning Commission amendments.
Who could approve sent agenda as information, item six A and six B?
All in favor? All opposed? I have. Approval amendments, seven, eight, minutes of the joint meeting of Darlington County Municipal Council, County Council, Board of Education, and Legislative Delegation, July twenty ninth, twenty nineteen.
Move the approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I have. Seven C, minutes of special meeting, August twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen.
Seven B, Mr.
Chair. Seven B. Minutes of public hearing and regular meeting, August twelfth, twenty nineteen. Need a motion?
Move the approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I have. Seven C, minutes of special meeting, August twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen.
Move the approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I have. Mr. Kilgus?
Yes, sir. I have these fantastic new lights. I will not have to strain my eyes. I'm going to thank them for doing that. Ordinance eight A, ordinance number nineteen dash sixteen, an ordinance to amend the agreement for the development of a Jordan industrial and business park dated November eighteenth, two thousand and ten by and between Darlington and Florence counties, so as to enlarge the park known as Project Clean. This is third, for third reading, I move the approval.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I have. Mr. Thomas?
Eight B, ordinance number nineteen dash seventeen, to provide for the issuance and sale of a not exceeding four million, two hundred thousand dollars general obligation bond of Darlington County, South Carolina, to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds of said bond shall be expended, to provide for the payment of said bond and other matters relating thereto. Third reading, I move to approve at this time.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I have.
Item eight C, ordinance number nineteen dash eighteen, to provide for the issuance and sale of not exceeding four million, one hundred thousand dollars general obligation bond at Darlington County, South Carolina, Darlington County Fire Protection District, to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds shall be expended, to provide for the payment thereof and other matters relating thereto. Third reading, move to approval of ordinance number nineteen dash eighteen.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I have.
Eight D, ordinance number nineteen dash twenty, an ordinance to amend ordinance number nineteen dash oh seven, Darlington County FY nineteen twenty budget ordinance for supplemental appropriation to the airport fund to receive and expand federal aviation administration FAA grants funds for the airport runway five dash twenty-three rehabilitation project and establish the effective date of this ordinance. This is third reading, I move for approval.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I have.
Ordinance number nineteen dash nineteen, an ordinance to authorize and establish a program to grant special property tax assistance to certain rehabilitation historic property, the Bailey Bill program, and other matters remaining thereto. Second reading, carryover question.
I second carryover.
Any discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I have. Resolution nine A, resolution number seven oh seven, recognition of Darlington County
I'll read the resolution number seven oh seven. Recognition of Darlington County Deputy David Self, whereas on July fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, Darlington County Deputy David Self was awarded the two thousand and nineteen South Carolina Sheriff's Association Deputy of the Year Award. Whereas Deputy David Self went above and beyond the call of duty during incidents that occurred on November twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, January twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, and January twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen. Whereas on November twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, Deputy David Self went above and beyond the call of duty when he witnessed a motor vehicle overturn, trapping a mother and her two small children. Deputy Self rushed to the scene, crawled into the overturned vehicle, and safely pulled out the children, one of whom was dangling upside down, still attached to a car seat. Deputy Self then freed the mother, moved her for a safe distance from the vehicle, and reunited the family. Whereas on January twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, Deputy David Self was dispatched to assist in the search for a missing puppy. Learning that the puppy had fallen in the nearby well, Deputy Self crawled into the fifteen-foot deep well, placed the puppy in his vest carrier, and crawled out, saving the puppy's life. Whereas on January twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen, Deputy David Self responded to a call of an individual who was unresponsive due to a heroin overdose. Deputy Self administered a Narcan injection but was unable to locate the pulse. Deputy Self continued life-saving behavior, performing CPR to revive the individual. After several minutes, the individual became responsive and began breathing again. Deputy Self stabilized the individual until EMS arrived. Deputy Self's quick action and proper use of the resources and training saved the life. Now, therefore, be resolved by the governing body of Darlington County, South Carolina, the Darlington County Council, to hereby recognize and commend Deputy David Self for his willingness to serve, defend, and protect human life at every cost. Be it further resolved that the Darlington County Council presents this resolution of appreciation to Deputy David Self, whose actions embodied the Darlington County Sheriff's Office core values of integrity, accountability, and selfless service. Approved in the meeting duly assembled this ninth day of September, two thousand and nineteen.
You're going back to work now. Committee reports. Other items, performance boards, and commissions, minds of carryover. Flowers, Mr. Carryover. Mr. Davis.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to replace Mr. Lawrence Gibson Patterson Hyans with Ms. Velda Mack. Velda Mack.
Second. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I have. Mr. Brown, carryover. All right, eleven B, bid award for five-year lease of farmland at County Airport, lease number one oh nine, six acres in the interior of runway system, and lease number two, one hundred and forty-five acres surrounding the exterior of the runway system, airport. Need a motion?
Need a motion. We accept the lease.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I have.
Mr. Chairman, just to dot the i's and cross the t's, would you all please vote to solidify the resolution, codify the resolution nine A? You read the resolution, but never voted.
Well, we can do that. We need a motion.
Remove.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I have. That was easy. All right. Contract for the airport runway five twenty-three rehabilitation project. Need a motion?
Move.
In discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I have. Eleven D, bid award for purchase of a truck or environmental services, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars, send one cent.
Move for approval.
Second. Any discussion?
I got a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
The day, you know, the bids coming in for this?
This was, went through a competitive bidding process, so we looked at already bidded-out vehicles, and out of the vehicles available, this was the best price for the value that we were getting. Other, you know, some bids are put out, everybody bids on, but in corporate purchasing programs, the bidding's already been done. And that's what happened. This was purchased off of a corporate person. But they looked at Peterbilt, Mack, Volvo, and International. And the Peterbills seemed to offer the best deal for the price.
How long for this kind of thing to hold?
It could be three months to seven months, according to delivery. I don't remember what delivery time was. Do you remember any chance?
Yeah. They said we would have it by December.
But Peterbilt had a lot more horsepower than Volvo or Mack.
I don't know if Peterbilt coming in New York.
Well, on these, because the Volvos are having a tough time getting up down the hill.
Well, we did a Peterbilt, right? Yeah. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I have. Done deal. All right. Administrator, a couple things for you tonight. On the Bailey Bill, which had second reading on, we were in a hurry getting the agenda together prior to the Dorian, and it's possible for us to us last week. So, really been to get that off of second reading, public hearing, because one of the texts is out, they want to be at second reading. But we've assigned a couple of different items. One part of this Bailey Bill is its historic preservation and the proper historic preservation of that property, get that consented. So, Brian Gandy with the historic commission is going to look at that and come back next week with suggestions on how that architectural review board should function for us. It'll probably be the historic commission that will be the architectural review board that's required there. And then Terry in codes of development, or Development Service Codes and Planning, is to look at it to make sure that we run this thing smoothly and it's in our organs, how it should smoothly occur before we finalize second reading. Because ours has got to be a little bit different than the way the cities is set up, because we have historic commission and we have planning commissions. We'll have you some language by next meeting to go for second reading on that. The next night, each one of you should have received one of these brochures. Just wanted to point out, take a look at this. This was done by Economic Development, put out as under the partnership, which is the private public sector committee that comes together to look at economic development in Darlington County. It just gives an overview of some of the statistics and data for the last several years, and the word won't come to me. Not clients, but new growth and where it was and who brought it in, and how much they invested over that time period. So, just take a look at that. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to go with you. And lastly, if you noticed, the Comprehensive Plan will be reviewed on, what day was that? On the consent agenda? September seventeenth? And that's an opportunity for the public to come and talk to the plan developer that was contracted through the COG, the PDCO, to put in any input they may have about the Comprehensive Plan. They go over, you know, numerous elements, such as transportation, economic development elements, housing elements, different elements that go into what's the Comprehensive Plan in the county for growth in the future. So, those are just three things I've got for you tonight.
Yeah, I asked a question, please. Now, in reference to the plan, would that, how is that, would be in the paper and all?
It's already been in the paper, isn't it? I'm pretty sure COG put that out in the paper, and then it's also goes out with our agenda, that plans out there. So, they have to advertise that the Comprehensive Plan's out, or there's a public media on the Comprehensive Plan.
I'm just reference to the general public throughout the county.
Well, as far as I know, it's gone out with all the general circulation of our agendas. So, everywhere the public is posted our agenda, that information out there. I'm pretty sure the COG has put it in the paper, but I'll have to double check on that, or the contract, I think they were to advertise that. Mr. Kilgus?
Oh, thank you. I'll find the page, sorry. I think we need to really commend what's going on at the airport. They've got a grant, and we have to put in two hundred and eleven thousand dollars. And they pay, the feds and the state are going to put in the rest of it, or it could come up to four million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and some change. That's a lot of money for a small county airport. And that meant that somebody did a lot of hard work to convince... And that meant that somebody did a lot of hard work to convince the feds and the state that it was worthwhile. Uh, I know it's going to be inconvenient for a few months while they do the work, but when they get through, uh, bigger corporations, uh, and, you know, bigger planes can come in there, uh, and it's going to be beneficial to our economic development, uh, office to be, have this capability. So, I wanted to commend them. And with that, I have done the honors.
For sure. I appreciate that too, Mr. Kilgore. I'm just going to piggyback on what he says, I think it's great. However, I need to get out and see airport and see what's going on, Mr. Stewart, so I can kind of do a little visual checking what's happening. And also, I'd like to let the council know, the sheriff, thank you so much. One of his staff did a church safety presentation, and I was in the group. They did a magnificent job. And I wish it was some way other churches and just the general community would know what happens, because the young man did an excellent job. Thank you, sheriff, for your services and what you do.
That's it.
Well, I'd like to welcome Jacob Godwin back home. Uh, he's newest member, still to Salivi Cox Law Firm. So, we will be seeing a good bit of him. I see Jim has told you about the proper footwear. Jacob's a, grew up at Hartsel, Mayo graduate, Walker graduate, University of South Carolina Law School, and you were clerking with, uh, just recently, Terry Winkler. So, I'd like to point a pride, I've known him since he was a, a little fella, and, uh...
Slow down on that, man.
Yeah, so, I, but I'm glad, glad he's back home and glad he's working with Jim, and, uh, look forward to working with him.
I would just like to, uh, recognition to Kerry and the staff, the racetrack, and the volunteers, and a number of people under some pretty, potentially adverse conditions and rainstorm. I talked to certain people that stayed, uh, to the end, and, you know, it's a huge event. I, I think Mr. Stewart and also county employees monitoring the potential hurricane, but huge economic impact to PD region, especially Darlington County, so for all the staff and volunteers, I'd like to say thank you for your job.
That old jet sitting up there showing in front of the apple. When is it going to be repainted or something?
The jet, and that jet. What, didn't the Boy Scouts or somebody used to keep it up?
Yeah, they were for a little while, but, um, they've pretty much left it back up to us. It needs to be probably washed and cleaned up a little bit.
How, how much longer have we have on the lease?
We have to renew it, I have to, I've already got the paperwork saying it's an annual renewal that we have.
They don't keep it up, the lease don't keep it up?
No, it's our responsibility to keep it up, sir.
And I'll contact the Boy Scouts and see if someone would like to take that on as their Eagle Scout project, because that would be, the last time, I remember, uh, it was a joint between the Civil Air Patrol and the Eagle Scout. They did, that's the last time they painted it and did everything, that was probably ten years ago, um, that I remember them doing that.
Longer than that, Mr. (laughing). Longer than that. That Eagle Scout is now, uh, thirty-four. It didn't work.
That's all. All right, good evening. Uh, first, let me thank Director Andrew and Lamar Dixie Youth in Darlington County, that's a special achievement. So, make sure you thank each and every one of them, your kids. Now, I don't play no sports, never have, but that's a, that's an awesome job that they did, you know, even from a little, little country town, going to the big city to play ball, that's really amazing. And Deputy Self, I know he had to go back to work, called to our sheriff, going to see the back out there. But that's commending him, that's, that's an awesome job that he's doing, putting his life on the line, because I'm telling you right now, I ain't jumping in no well for nobody. I can't swim, I, I... I'm glad and thank the Lord, the hurricane passed. So, to the sheriff, to the fire department, to the EMS, thank y'all for what y'all do. I know y'all working long hours, your employees working long hours, does away from their families. But again, I'm glad the hurricane did make the little turn and did, you know, come through him. And, uh, please keep George Cannon in your prayer, he's not with us tonight, because he had cataract surgery. So, you get home, say a little prayer for him, because I believe he will be back next morning. Thank you, sir.
Has he got the other one done?
He got the, later on this week. Okay.
If I was in that well, you jumping in that way?
I get you.
I just wanted to, uh, say, um, the Bertown Rodeo was a success. I don't know if you've ever been to it, but it's really neat. It's a high school rodeo that Bertown has every year. And, uh, from bull riding, it's really neat. If you ever get a chance to go out and watch it, watch it. Appreciate the staff to help them make that a success as well. That's all I have.
As you know, four one is closed now. Take out the two bridges, so that'd be about a three hundred and, I think it's sixty-something days, probably before the race, and, uh, so going that way, detour. And, uh, talking about the race, I had to leave probably about twelve-thirty or one, but I'm pretty sure at least staying there, that's what I'm...
I got home about four o'clock Monday morning.
Back in the ten, eight years. And again, I want to thank our staff too, because every time we have an emergency or something that comes up with a hurricane, we step up to the call, and it's always done right, accurate, and never you any complaints, and we really appreciate that.
Including Sheriff's Department.
And the sheriff's office officer. So, yeah, without them, I mean, they, that race down there, you weren't seen, we went out there and looked at it, I don't see that in the world, they keep all that stuff together. But you do a good job. You can call him anytime, and he's there. Little boys from Lamar and, uh, other teams, Darlington and Lamar, they understand the job, and we appreciate them too. And at that note, I'll say, let's, we don't have any exact sections, do we?
Move to adjourn.
Second.